Our own analysis of the drainage of down in the area of Silver Lake Road and Candlelight Road, consisting of the basin C of the Lakeview Estates and some infrastructure put in for the town on Silver Lake Road. As this board is well aware, there had been some ongoing flooding issues over the last year in this area. So we developed our own model and analysis to look at what's going on here. And through that analysis, we identified some areas where some improvements can be made. One being to the outlet of basin C, basically increasing the capacity to bring water across Silver Lake Road into the lake so it doesn't well up and pond into the street and cause flooding. Installing a new catch basin at the intersection of Candlelight Road and Silver Lake Road to capture runoff coming out of Candlelight Road as well as Silver Lake Road to bring it into the basin, provide more detention and treatment. As part of our proposal, we also are designed removing some construction swales, I'll call them, that were put in during the construction of Lakeview Estates. These are up on the hillside, essentially stone riprap swales that were used to divert stormwater from some sloped areas. So we've designed regrading those areas to remove those swales. And with that, we're proposing that the disturbed area caused by removing that swell and smoothing out that area be redressed with a screened loom and hydroseed and then matted, jute matted, or something similar to hold that new material down while it germinates and so it doesn't erode down into basin C. The good thing with this, in our timing of this, we're proposing this work to be done at the start of the construction season past April 15th, which is ideal for germination of grass and things like that to really take hold. That's kind of the quick synopsis. I guess the other component was basin C itself had been previously labeled an infiltration basin through our analysis and meeting onsite with Cliff Matthews as well as Frank and Jim. We determined that it does not meet the requirements of an infiltration basin. It doesn't have the separation to groundwater. So we've redesigned this basin to be an extended detention basin by putting in a low-flow orifice at the bottom of the basin so it won't retain water long-term. With all of that, I think that the proposal is, will go a long way to solve the issues that have been experienced down there. We got some comments from Frank and his group yesterday, and I'll let Frank speak to that, but I think we have a little bit more work to do and some things to look at through maybe some additional analysis, but it seems like we're on the right track here.
Frank, do you want to add anything?
Sure. Again, Frank DePietro from BSC Group, happy to be here. I've gone through the OCG evaluation. Again, I think I found their calculations to be appropriate. The proposed improvements, I think, are appropriate and very, very reasonable. The report had had a few minor adjustments. For example, they've got a single great catch basin, the corner of Silver Lake Road and Candlelight Lane. Maybe they put a double grate on there that might improve some of the infiltration. There are limitations. This is an improvement over what's out there. It's not going to eliminate the issues that are much wider spread than that. They've got a couple clever things. So there's a low spot in an oil and gas separator on Silver Lake Road, pot way down away toward where that outlet is. And that's an area of flooding. And so what they're proposing is actually creating a little bit of a stone line ditch that runs into the overflow spillway from the basin C. And then they're going to put a catch basin to pick that up. They're increasing the size of the outlets from that and from the town drainage system. There's no increase in runoff getting into Silver Lake. As the overall, I think I have no issues, a couple minor comments, no issues really with the overall evaluation. Having walked the site, I am now familiar with the issues out there for a particular erosion and sedimentation control and also with ongoing maintenance. So I've got some comments in there that will, I think, more applicable to the Conservation Commission about conditions that would go into place that would maybe a little bit stronger than in the past with regards to the erosion and sedimentation controls that might be implemented and also with looking at and maintaining the system. It works fine if you, as you design it, but over time, if there's sediment or others, it will go down. So those are the two things that I had some concerns about. And again, I believe they'll be addressed in the conservation hearings that is upcoming. I think it's for the 27th of January. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Thanks, Frank. I'm going to open up the board members and comments or questions.
Peter, can I ask one question?
Right ahead.
Thank you. Frank, did you have an opportunity to look at their proposed work schedule?
I did not, to be honest.
Okay. All right. And then I noticed that one of your comments, you discussed it briefly at the end, was that the system's going to require a significant amount of upkeep. Is that, is that one of your concerns? Or I thought I saw there was some reference to that.
I mean, typically, you want to look at a system, or maybe in the spring and the fall, and make sure that the outlet's not blocked or does not sediment accumulating. I would look at, because this is a very sensitive area, I think I'd look at some kind of, at least for the first year or two, till everything gets established, maybe a quarterly review and to hold some people's feet to the fire. And this is not anything related to Sean or OCG, but basically to have some kind of reporting, maybe on an annual or semi-annual basis that says, we went out there, we looked at, the pipes aren't blocked, you know, there's not, a foot of sediment has accumulated somewhere in here. The system has close tolerances in some areas. And again, so if a catch basin gets covered up with leaves, for example, or trash or something, that would severely limit its functioning ability. And so I think that's a real sensitive type thing. Eventually, I'm not sure about the basin, but eventually this will be a town controlled. Certainly the stuff on Silver Lake Road is town controlled. So again, we want to make sure that both the town and the applicant, the owner, whether they own the basin C, is up to speed, making sure that they take care of this stuff.
And then one other question for you, Frank. There's been some concern in the past that the hydroseeding hasn't worked because of the slope and for whatever reason. And there's been a difficulty in maintaining it and growing things there. And there was a suggestion at the last meeting that perhaps there should be a consideration for laying sod, or I think that's the term, of doing that as opposed to hydroseeding again and then working that way. Do you have an opinion on that subject?
So I've only walked the site once, so I'm an expert now. But I guess my concern would be, there are slopes and the suggestions and details on the latest OCG plans talk about, you know, putting like a jute netting or something over that. I'm not a soil scientist, I'm a civil engineer, but the topsoil out there does not look like a nice loamy material. And again, it may not be appropriate in that big of an area, but it might be worthwhile to have someone check the soil to see if it's acceptable for growing relatively quick material and stuff like that. And then, again, implementing measures that would hold the seed in place. Maybe it's a hydroseeding with some kind of covering over it or something like that. And I think while it germinates, it needs to be watched very carefully. It would not be very hard, and they're taking out the riprap swales and the little dams there, the check dams. But I suggest, in a comment, that they may want to look at minor regrading so you don't have a channel that's going to erode over time. You sort of flatten it out and make it maybe a little bit of a swell that's wider. So I think the establishment of the vegetation in the slope areas is going to have to be something that's carefully monitored. And there may want to be some additional materials around that if an erosion control issue happens, you've got a supply of straw wattles or hay bales or silt fence or something else to basically stabilize it almost immediately. My understanding is this project has had ongoing issues with sedimentation and erosion control and a prompt response. And so I think, you know, if the best design in the world, if it's not constructed properly, it's not going to work very well. And if a great deal of sediment gets in the bottom of that basin, it's going to basically sort of minimize the improvements that are being proposed here, their effectiveness.
Great. Thank you.
A couple of questions, if I may.
Yeah, just a second.
Okay.
Brian, if I'm looking at the construction schedule, basically given bad weather and something, you're looking at the end of May, be, end of April, beginning of May, I would have to think hydroseed will grab fairly quick in that timeframe. It's a good time for you to be doing that. Obviously, we got to monitor it, but.
And Peter, to that point, I did have a conversation with Sean Malone about this. And Sean did bring up some creative idea. I don't know, Sean, if you wanted to share that with the board.
Which idea was that, Jim?
Yeah, many, Sean, I'm sure. Putting, screening the loom first and, you know.
Right, right. So that was one of the things that we observed when we went out there is the loom that's there, and I agree with Frank, is not great. And one of the problems that is, I think, has occurred there is there's a lot of stones in the loom. So where you have the stones, grass is not going to grow. So we're specifying this screened loom to get those stones out of there so you have a nice soily material and then hydroseed it and then mat it. So it'll stay in place if it rains. And as the chair mentioned, we're in an ideal situation for germination. So I think that the screened loom combined with the matting and hydroseed in April-May condition is ideal for this to take hold. It should work well.
Thanks, Sean. You had a question?
A couple of questions. That's a fairly steep slope. One thing, would it be advantageous to terrace the slope so it's not just one huge slope going all the way down? And secondly, rather than just grass or seed and with the mesh, would it be advantageous to have some sort of trees or shrubs to grab a little more of the soil so to prevent the erosion and maybe even help with some of the, some of the moisture that might become down that hill?
Yes, and you touched upon something that, when Frank was speaking, a thought came to mind where I think it may make sense to have some maybe intermittent straw wattle barriers, parallel or perpendicular with the slope going across maybe two or three segments to help hold that down during construction and during the germination. As far as the trees, I think we're kind of, we're crossing over a little bit into something that we did with Bellingham Shores as well. We do have a proposal as part of that project, which does have installation of trees in this area. And I believe as part of that approval, the applicant is making a donation to the town to have that be able to be incorporated.
So back to the, back to that slope, does it make sense to level it off like maybe a third of the way down flat and then continue the slope and then maybe level it off again to keep that from flowing down so rapidly?
I would be hesitant, and this would be something that I'd certainly like to talk to Frank about more. I'd be a little hesitant in doing that, and the reason being is we have a confined area with a defined start and endpoint. So if we create these level benches, as you're talking about, we're going to be creating steeper slopes to keep everything within. That's why I was thinking of more of the waddle layering, similar to what you're thinking about, maybe a third of the way and two-thirds of the way that would serve the same purpose while the grass is taking hold. Once the grass takes hold, this isn't that significant of a slope. I think we have it, it was about eight or 12%, something like that, which is not extreme for a grassed area. So the trick is going to be get the vegetation to take hold.
And I may just add to that, if I could. The grading for the existing swales isn't going to be substantial. You're not going to fill in, you're not going to have a slope that goes from the top of the hill all the way down. So I think some of the runoff is going to be directed into those low areas, so it's not going to be a straight shot down from the top of the slope to the bottom. And I, in my mind, I keep it coming back to close monitoring, if in fact, a heavy, so during construction, for a large project, you would have weekly inspections, stormwater, pollution prevention, plant inspections. And they had to pick up, or in some cases, depending on the size of the, it might be right after a heavy storm. And maybe there's a condition that the conservation puts into their approval that talks about, you know, if there's a heavy storm from April to whenever the vegetation is established, someone needs to go out and do a report to make sure there's not sedimentation happening in those areas. Or someone's come up and, you know, there was, people walked up the hill and their footprints now are an eroded area and stuff like that. So I think they can do it, but it has to be monitored, is my concern. If it's not monitored, it's going to go bad very quickly, in my mind.
I have one other question on the retention basin. Is that satisfy the 100-year storm criteria?
Yes. Yep. We do meet the 100-year storm.
Thank you.
Do you have any comments, questions?
Yes, I do. Frank, in your report, you had mentioned that the proposed catch basin on Candlelight Lane and Silver Lake Road will overflow during a 100-year storm event? That was, as noted, it says it in the report, as noted in the drainage analysis and proposed improvement summary, that the proposed catch basin at Candlelight Lane and Silver Lake Road will overflow during 100-year storm.
Yeah, so two classifications. And Sean, I'm going to give away a secret of civil engineers. So storm drainage systems are designed for a 25-year storm. And so the greatest health can't handle 100-year storm. So if 100-year storm occurs, you'll expect flooding at all catch basins. If it's the top of the hill, water's going to run down, and that catch basin at the bottom of Candlelight and Silver Lake is going to get bypass flow from the catch basins above it that can't let that intake. So, you know, a double grate catch basin will give your bigger area a lot more water in. It still won't handle 100-year storm. But the second part of that, to clarify, is that currently in the four bay of basin C, the water that goes in there doesn't drain out, or it drains out so slowly that you've got a foot or more of water standing there almost all the time. And because you're trying to connect and you want drains to flow by gravity into the basin, the elevation of, and the corner of Candlelight Lane is actually only two foot or two and a half feet, I think, higher than the basin bottom. If there's water in that basin bottom when it rains, that's going to limit the flow into, from the catch basin into basin C. And part of the suggested improvements to the basin C is under Sean's report, is they're going to do modifications to basically eliminate. If you look at that four bay right now, I'm not a wetland scientist, I believe there's wetland grass growing in it. It's wet sufficiently enough that in fact, you've created a little bit of wetland. I won't mention that to the Conservation Commission, but that's what's there.
So that leads to my follow-up question. So you think that the suggestions made by Sean will probably solve that issue?
They'll improve it. I don't think the situation, and it was pre-existing even this development, but there are drainage issues along Silver Lake Road for this project. It will make things better than are happening right now. It provides for a couple of escape valves, if you will, the catch basin at the corner of Candlelight, the swell I mentioned earlier that sort of ties in to the overflow spillway from basin C. Those will allow the water to go other places where they can't go right now.
Okay. Thank you, Frank.
And I brought this up at the last meeting, but I just wanted to readdress it. Additional catch basins up Candlelight, would that be advantageous?
I don't think so. I mean, one of the questions that I had, that I think Sean's going to probably look at, is under the design storm, the 25-year storm, catch basins are supposed to impact or take up the flood that's anticipated coming toward them. The catch basins, some of the existing ones have been upgraded to have two grates, a double grate catch basin. They have high inflow capacity grates, they're called cascade grates. Want to make sure that's the case. And so if you do calculations, in the good old days, I did them by a nomograph. Now they're doing by computer. But, you know, it would be nice to check that to make sure those catch basins are functioning to pick up the 25-year design storm. As I mentioned, 100-year storm's going to go bypass some of that. If in fact, some of those catch basins have bypass and they don't have a cascade grate or whatever, maybe that would improve it. But if all the water's going into the catch basin under current conditions, then I'm not sure more catch basins are going to pick it up at this point.
And actually, either Sean or Frank, one of the questions I did have reading this, and I couldn't find it, is the new basin at the end of the road, is that going to be a single or a double?
Well, right now, it was originally proposed as a single, but one of Frank's recommendations was make that a double grate. So we will go ahead and make that a double grate. Yeah.
So Jim, from what I understand, what we have tonight is to, are we looking to lift the entire cease and desist or lift a number of, allow a number of permits for section?
Yep. So it's entirely up to the board. So yeah, so just a reminder, we are discussing whether or not to lift the cease and, or recommend lifting the cease and desist to the building inspector who's here tonight. And with that, could certainly be any number of conditions that the board may have. I think we've already kind of discussed at the previous meeting that you would want any kind of lift to be tied to a very rigid schedule, which you have here, as well as what I've picked up through this conversation is potentially having a construction monitoring agent onsite that could, you know, report back to us that on April 19th, 2021, this was formally accomplished, we've looked at it, and in fact, this was achieved and, you know, and it can report to me and I can distribute to you all. So that's at least two conditions I see there. And then, yes, if you wanted to tie a certain number of units, you certainly could have that discussion. And I would just lastly say, you know, with the plan itself, there is some tweaks that certainly needs to be made. And I know Frank had touched on this a few times, and a couple of you have as well. You know, the notice of intent process is still ongoing. Conservation's certainly going to put, have some items to contribute as well. So I think at the end of the day, we'll get a really good plan for the town. So, you know, with those two items at a minimum, the schedule and the construction monitoring, and yeah, certainly if you want to discuss number of units, we certainly could.
And maybe, I got two things, actually. Maybe I'm totally wrong. Would we be not more advantageous to hold occupancy permits until this is complete? I mean, let's just say they go gangbusters and get five homes done in the next however many months. Is that something we want to consider? And the other thing too is I'm looking at the construction schedule, and I know it's done with all good intent. God forbid we have five, six days of heavy rain and bad weather in April or May. Me looking at this and understanding construction, I'd like to put it out to the board to give them, not hold them to that exact 531. God forbid we have weather, maybe put a little buffer in there for them, just in good faith to them too. I'm not sure what the other board members feel about that. All right. Sean, do you believe regardless of whether you can get it done in that timeframe?
Well, yeah, no. And you're exactly right, and nobody knows the weather. What my thought was is if we feel this schedule is slipping because of the weather or some other reason, that we report that to Jim, the reason why, and either revise the schedule or, you know, come up with something. But basically, using this as the benchmark and to keep the communication open, and this gives Jim and the town something to hold us to. But like you said, if it slips, we got to let you know. And so we're not back here six months from now and saying, hey, what happened? You know?
And to add to that, I think you could certainly, you know, even if you do lift the cease and desist, you're still extending the permit. You could certainly continue this to April 1st. You know, so between now, on April 1st, I think Sean and whoever's the, or I guess Alex, the general contractor, could certainly report to the zoning board that we in fact do plan to achieve the 419 date. And, you know, you could certainly, heck, you could meet on 419 if you wanted to, to confirm that.
Okay. I mean, again, I can only speak for myself, and I know we've got a couple people in the public who want to speak too. They have shown progress. I'd like to be able to get them building again, soon as we get them building, soon as this gets wrapped up and we can move forward. But before we go there, I suppose Brian's up in the public. Brian, you have any comments before I open to the board?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I think all the changes look good. My concerns really are the guys on the ground. Like Sean, are you going to go out to periodically check the work that's done? Because there've been, some of these guys that they send out to go out there are not the A-team. And I know the existing, but just the as-built were not, you know, what was actually done wasn't done per what was designed before. And frankly, to me, some of the work has been shoddy. So I just want to make sure that whoever, you know, if Sean's directly tied to monitor some of the work, I want to make sure that with that schedule, some of the guys that have gone out previously look like they just send a truck full of guys out there, they bang out the work, and they, you don't want to just get it done as fast as possible, but that there's a direct connection between the civil engineers who are designing it and the work that's being done.
So my recommendation there, I mean, Sean's welcome to go out as well, but I would request that the board condition that a scope and fee be reviewed and paid for by the applicant to have a peer review engineer confirming this to us. So on 419, they would go out and confirm that, you know, task number one is complete per the plan, and then report back to the board, task number two is complete, and hopefully by 531, we can wrap it up.
Yeah, because I know before too, some of the issue was, I think that Fafford tried, you know, that they, they should have implemented, for example, like some of those mesh kind of soil stabilization methods earlier, because they kept just trying to sloppily grate it and then hydroseed it and then would wash away. And there wasn't, you know, there was just the guys on the ground not following the drawings and not doing best kind of engineering practices. So I guess that's my concern, is just to make sure, you know, and then the other things are just, if there isn't a lot of rain, to make sure that it's getting, if there's dry periods, that it is getting watered, because that was an issue before. If there isn't a lot of rain to make sure that it's getting, if there's dry periods, that it is getting watered because that was an issue before. Um, and then some of the issue, I mean, I guess before where some of the elevations were not as designed. Just to make sure that what you guys have designed is being. Confirmed.
Yep. Yeah, and 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 yes, I I typically i- am involved uh through construction, periodic inspection. Um, but I think with uh with with Jim's recommendation, we'd have no objection to that having uh. Um, a a town consultant, someone like Frank or, you know, BSC group. Um, acting on behalf of the town to provide maybe a a weekly report or something like that. I I think that seems reasonable.
Okay, yeah, that's great.
Yeah, I share your concern, Brian. I agree that having a third party inspector on behalf of the town. Being present whenever each milestone is completed and. Pretty much signing off that it's been completed per their inspection, perhaps have a report with pictures in it would really help us. Move this along. And I agree with Peter in terms of. Uh, hopefully getting, you know, the building and the construction moving on and not holding the process. Um, one thing now with the I don't know the question if I may.
Um. Anyone want to make a motion on this? You want me to make a motion? Anyone feel objective to this?
Does someone have a question? I thought there was another question.
I had just a question in terms of the rip wraps are is is that going to remain is the on the task number six? Or the last task, sorry, number seven, removing all temporary erosion controls. Does that? Include removing all those check dams as well, or are those going to stay in place?
No, that we're planning the the check dams to stay in place and and what these are is it it's really, it it's not what you see out there right now.
Okay.
It's just a it's it's a small, it's probably about uh, have to check the detail, usually about six inches high. Um, just along the bottom of the swale. And those are just left in place. And a lot of times you'll have the the grass grow within it. It just becomes. Incorporated into the swale as a as a long term BMP.
Okay, thanks, Sean. I just wanted to make sure it's not the same as what's existing now and so smaller scale.
Yes, yes.
And and for, you know, perhaps we can, if uh hydro seeding is not working, perhaps in the future, we can. Consider either some kind of, you know. G text style or or sod um similar to what? Uh, Mr. Salisbury recommended, but we can move. With that later on, should hydro seeding not work perhaps?
Mm hmm. Yeah.
Peter, i- i- could I ask a question? You don't mind?
You certainly can.
Thank you. It it's a question for Tim, but I he's out. He's out of the camera frame, so I don't know if he hears me. Uh, but maybe Jim, you know the answer to the question. Uh, how many um building permits have been applied for?
Oh, for phase two?
Or, yeah, which how many are pending?
Do you know that, Tim?
Yeah, there's probably um. I would say there's at least. I don't know, maybe ten or twelve in the queue right now.
Yeah, I can tell you that all thirty of the market rate lots in phase two are under agreement. Um. I think of twenty five of them went under agreement before October first, and there's got to be. At least ten that are back in July. So we've been applying for building permits, and I think actually. Tim ran out of room in his office for the building permit applications, so we're holding on to them. So. Um, as far as like a phased building permit release, that we're already kind of in a naturally. Phase release just based on how quickly Tim and his office can can churn out the building permits anyway. So. Um. Uh, and in the meantime, these buyers whose lots went under agreement, especially last summer, I mean, they all have rate locks and financing issues and. Planning to sell their own houses and find temporary housing and all of the uh. Issues associated with with selling your house and buying a house and moving, so.
Thank you.
Um, you're actually having a great winter as far as buildings concerned. These, you know, you probably pound quite a few houses out in the next two or three months if they're active.
So just in the interest of time, what I would suggest and of for the board's consideration um is that we. Um, recommend that the uh. That the building inspector release ten of the building permits. That we uh. Seek a construction management supervisor, as Jim has suggested. That we do in fact hold them to the the construction schedule that they put together. And if that they they do need to. Come back and explain why that um they can't meet that, then that um. Then that should happen that way. Um, I would, I I'm not inclined to give, we have been. And I appreciate, and so let me start with this. I appreciate the effort that has been made, and I recognize there's been effort made, and. Sean is always great to work with and he's a he's a responsible. Um, well qualified engineer. Um. And I I'm I'm confident that he's going to solve the the problem that we're facing, but. At the same time, we've done this long enough to know that. What's discussed in the meetings and and then what happens. Um, outside of the meetings, there's there's sometimes a disconnect. I don't think that's going to happen, but it it has happened enough where I don't think we can afford to give the benefit of the doubt. We owe it to the neighborhood. That we hold feet to the fire, that we hold them to a rigid schedule. We asked for a a thorough and. Realistic schedule. They provided it to us, and I think that we we should. Uh, owe it to the neighborhood to to. Keep this process moving forward. Um, and I think that would be a reasonable compromise in the interim. And that we could always, like Jim said. Extend the permit or not extend the permit to deal with other issues. I don't know, Jim, if you have any.
Actually, I do, if you don't mind, Brian. Um, the reality is, you know, meeting meeting again, the first meeting of of April. Really, I don't think it's going to do us a lot of good because schedules and starts of the nineteenth. I would almost recommend the May meeting. With that said, that's, you know, five months from now, give or take. Um. I'm almost thinking we, and I understand not wanting to really full bore all the permits. We do increase that a little bit, give them the opportunities, five months to get as much as they can built. Again, to keep these moving a little bit quicker and faster.
But why? But I I I appreciate it, but. We've we've gone down this path many times.
I know we have.
And.
I guess I got you all the time that in good faith, they're showing good faith and. You know, the they've got people that have homes. And I mean, what are we right now? They're looking at like twenty five. So we did half of them even. I'm not talking about a lot of difference from what you and me are talking about. Um, just our our side of the good faith to have given them a couple more and saying. They got twenty five endless to buy it in half and they give them half of them to stop.
Twelve is fine.
And keeping in mind that where we're building is a completely separate drainage system from where. That the uh affected, you know, where the problem is. So the likelihood of. Any effect on the the building on on this drainage system is is non existent.
I agree with uh Brian for the twelve.
Yeah, in in Angela, in in all fairness to absolutely everyone, and I I agree with you, but. The original permit was set up so that this was all done before we start phase two. So we're all trying to work together on this. So hopefully.
But like, you know, like, like you said, five months is a long time, maybe.
I know it is.
Yeah.
I know it is, but have you back in March or April without the starting? You know? So. Um, anyone got a want to make a motion?
So uh, unless Jim, do you have any comments or do you think that's?
Yeah, so I, yeah, I do. I do hear what you're saying with the the number of units. I I I got the the conditions for the schedules, the, you know, stick it to the schedule. Construction monitoring, weekly reporting uh and achieving the task. Uh, you know, maybe it's twelve now and you meet back in and maybe March and see how the notice of intent process has gone. And something else, you know, because I I would agree that, you know, five months from now is a. It's a long time for for twelve twelve units. I think, you know, if they show us uh even more process progress, perhaps you could uh. You could get an uh, you know, maybe lift more.
And and one suggestion I I have um is. If if this board was inclined to to lift the entire cease and desist. If I heard the the chair um correctly, you still have the opportunity come um CO time. If if things and and that's about when this work would be getting done for a lot of these houses. If things aren't up to snuff. Um, you could then withhold CEOs, I I would imagine. Just a it, I thought just to kind of keep things moving so that then we're not, you know, we 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 don't have a similar meeting in. March or or April where, you know, we haven't gotten a chance to get things going yet.
I would try and uh and probably just release, you know, not not the. The full hold. I'd be more comfortable with ten or twelve.
Peter, may may I make a recommendation? Can we take a five minute recess for what I I gotta do and then uh come right back? Is that okay?
You guys go with that?
Yeah, I'm good.
Run, Jim.
Jason, just so you know, you're you're not muted.
Sorry.
And no, it's fine. I just didn't want to.
That wasn't even five minutes, was it?
Wow.
Jim, quick, you ran, huh?
Uh. You know. I I suppose one of the questions I have, Jim, and you know. I I mean, listen, if they turn around and and we cut them loose and they build fifty seventy five homes. And they've laid out this money, I mean, they're going to want to get this work done. To get the money back. What type of binding we put the town in? By having all these homes and not issuing occupancy permits?
Yeah, yeah, that that, you know, it does put certainly uh Tim and his office and.
Bind.
Tu- tough situation for occupancy, but. Um, you know, it's it's ultimately on the applicant to get the job done. Uh, so. You know, we we do get calls from time to time in in terms of. You know, hey, I'm trying to get in, but uh we have a closing on X date. We, you know, our our, you know, our candid response is, you know, once, once everything's completed per the town specifications. You know, we'll release. We don't want old old permits. Um. So, yeah, I mean, I it it definitely does put, you know, building department in a in a tough situation, but. It's not anything out of the ordinary, unfortunately, and uh. I mean, you know, honestly, my my recommendation would be, I I get I get your hesitancy. I I would say maybe. Closer to twenty uh permits if we're gonna. Uh, be if we're going to wait until, you know. Uh, three, four months from now.
Um, recommendations for you guys? What do you guys think?
I think I'm okay with twenty as long as we can meet. Um. The requirements, you know, as long as once we reach each milestone, should there be a problem, we still have the ability to. React. Do we have that, Jim?
Yes, I mean, you can certainly provide recommendations to the building inspectors to stop work immediately. So I mean, if we wanted to do month to month uh continuations here. And say, you know, task one isn't even started and it's, you know. Four, that's the middle of April, uh, you know, to you could, I could be on or Tim's here, so you you'll be able to follow along, but. Uh, you know, we could certainly stop work orders immediately, especially since you're. So candid now in in the in our meetings. I mean, that's there. It's not a surprise to the applicant if that was to be the case. And in addition, you know, this is going through the notice of intent process. So. Um, I think the Conservation Commission will certainly be obliged to to do the same, put a condition in there.
And again, I I really want to give them the opportunity to get moving and. Um. Basically get this off our plates, hate to say it that way.
If we go to back to Brian's suggestion of twelve, if if everything is looking good and going along. Well, we can always meet in March and uh raise a limit if that's if that's the case.
I'm okay with that.
The the.
No worries as well.
The the only the only comment I have on that is no construction is going to be done by then. We 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 will. In all likelihood, be done the NOI process, but we're still. Waiting for that construction season to start to actually implement the changes that are kind of the real real benchmarks here.
And and Sean, and I honestly think that completing the NOI project uh process will be a huge, huge leap forward.
Okay.
And and I also understand the construction process that if you're bringing crews in. It is much sweeter to have twenty five homes with a bump house, house, house.
Right.
I mean, it makes financial sense for you guys. I I understand that. Um, that's why I'm really teetering myself because I would just like to let you guys go to town, but. Hold your feet to the fire when the oxygen occupancy permits.
Right.
This is complete.
Right.
Um. It's kind of, that's my opinion, but I will certainly go with um what the board wishes to do.
If I may, I really appreciate the applicant's effort, and it really shows. Um, if I may ask. If I may, I really appreciate the applicant's effort, and it really shows, um, if I may ask, is it a big difference if we start with twelve compared to twenty uh for you in terms of your uh process?
I, it, I mean, it depends, um, I mean, four or five months is is a long time, and you know, when we can get quite a lot done up in phase two with on twelve building permits.
And I'm gonna interrupt you and I'm gonna help you a little bit, because I I honestly believe we're not gonna make you wait four or five months.
Right.
Um, I honestly would, you know, whatever we release, I'd like to meet again in March, make sure the NOI is in process and um, let you move forward until you follow on these, these don't get completed.
Yeah, we'd be happy to come back in March and um, you know, Sean can provide an update on on the NOI process and maybe talk about some more building permits at that meeting.
Okay.
I feel comfortable with that, Peter.
I I see no throwing a motion out there, so I'll throw it out there that um I make a motion that we do yes, partial release, I'm not sure how to word it, but um
Lift the release on twelve.
Released on twelve, and this does get monitored, we will meet again on March first to see the progress. And with the possibility of releasing more.
Second the motion.
Real quick, so uh just a recap before we finalize that motion, uh, so continuation of the permit to March fourth, which is our our meeting on in March, uh, with the recommendation of a partial release of the cease and desist for twelve units um, with the condition that uh they main, they maintain schedule, which sure, uh, until up at March won't really affect the schedule all that much, other than hopefully the notice of intent process is nearing completion. Um, and uh with the condition that, you know, again, with whenever they do get the schedule going, there will be a a scope executed for peer review for construct, construction monitoring uh with a weekly report and confirmation of achievement of tasks, does that sound about right?
I think so.
That sounds good.
Jim, can I, can I ask you a question, can that scope uh work be done in advance of March, or is that something that should wait till?
Oh, I, yeah, no, I could establish the scope, um, I could, I can ask Frank to establish one starting tomorrow, I'm sure, he's pretty quick at turning those around.
And and Sean, in in all fairness, I mean, if you honestly see things are absolutely going perfectly for you, um, you know, you could, hopefully by March, we could go ahead and release more permits, just let you start going and uh building away, I mean, it's good for everyone.
Yep, no, it that sounds reasonable, and thank you.
All right, so I got a motion on the floor, I didn't get a second?
Second.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, good luck, guys, I really hope this works for you this time.
Great, and again, thank, thank you very much, I appreciate the the board's making special time for us tonight as well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you all.
Take care all.
All right, thank you, guys, I really appreciate it.
I guess, Brian, do I gotta send it back to you to motion to close the meeting, or am I gonna do it, yeah?
Uh, go ahead, you can do it.
I make a motion to close the meeting.
Can I add one thing quick, sorry?
Oh, go right ahead.
Yep, can we possibly get the updated drawings with the additional comments that BSC had 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 about like the additional cash basis at the end and the few minor changes that we kind of discussed, is there any chance we get updated drawings on that?
Yeah, we'll definitely get uh updated plan sets, um, so Frank had given them uh to uh to Sean Malone and Oak Consulting, and now um, you know, they they might wait until their first notice of intent uh or the next notice of intent meeting before they update the plans, but as soon as I get them, I'll I'll get them over to you guys.
Okay, thank you, that's all I had, sorry.
Actually, while we're still online, if you don't mind, Jim, when you know this will be on the um conservation meeting, can you just send us a quick note?
Yep, yeah, absolutely, I can send out a reminder.
I made the motion to close, second.
Aye.
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 Good night, gentlemen, sleep tight.
Good night.
Night.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
Night, thank you.